It is six oh seven P M, June thirteenth. Can I call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Two Harbors? Roll call, please.
Woodruff.
Here.
Glaser.
Here.
Redmough.
Here.
Swanson.
Here.
Passy.
Here.
Erickson.
Here.
Redden.
Here. Fledgled leaders.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. Before we get to tonight's agenda, I wanted to provide a little clarification regarding the request by certain individuals to appear before the council. Last week, we had two additional people request to be scheduled as appearances at tonight's council meeting regarding the concerns raised by the Justice for March's Drive group. This group has made claims against Mayor Swanson, and it is apparent that the claims being made focus on a time when Mayor Swanson did not hold public office in the city. Due to the fact that these allegations focus on a time when Mayor Swanson did not hold a public office in the city, we came to the basic consensus that the matter is not city business. Due to this information and the fact that the city council has already made a determination that there will be a recall election for Mayor Swanson, the appearances for these two individuals were pulled from the agenda. I realize this is an extremely sensitive matter, and I do not take the situation lightly. I would like to offer the council an opportunity to weigh in if they would like to request that these individuals be allowed to speak. If that is the desire of the council majority in attendance tonight, we will offer those individuals three minutes each. I'm fine with any council weighing in on this. Right. We'll move on. I'm looking for a motions of approval of the agenda. So move, oh, sorry.
Mr. Chair, I wanted to read in those changes that we discussed at the.
Go ahead.
I'd like to request that we add Consent Agenda Number Nineteen, approving the request of the Heritage Days Committee to authorize a family 4K during the 2022 Heritage Day celebration, and Communications Number Five, a memorandum from Joe Ryan, Dalton, Inc., regarding the 2021-2022 Street Improvement Project, Minnehaha School Sewer Service, and removal of Consent Agenda Item Number One, approving minutes from the May twenty-third, 2022 council meeting. I'd like to also request that we add to New Business Number Two, a request to schedule a meeting of the Cable Commission, and Number Three, a request to schedule a meeting of the Waterfront Committee.
Are you comfortable with both one, or two and three being motions?
Absolutely.
Okay. Now I'm looking for a motion for approval of the agenda. So.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Right. First up, we have appearances. Paul Iverson, Third Avenue, request for verbal reports on legal costs associated with the lawsuit. And same thing goes. It's three minutes. When the buzzer goes off, everybody's done.
Try to do it in two, Mr. Chair. Paul Iverson, eight oh nine, Third Avenue. While I'm not familiar with the exact process, I would like to ask that the council president or the city council as a whole authorize city staff to present an oral report at every council meeting to the city council and citizens on bills accrued by the city, by attorneys Costley and Nuen for their work on behalf of the city concerning the lawsuit by Mr. Dzierski and Mados against certain city employees. The issued suit never should have happened. I don't, I don't even know if any of the planes live at Two Harbors, to tell you the truth. In this city, the citizenry has a right of recall of elected officials, and neither citizens nor employees should be subjected to frivolous lawsuits. So instead of having attorney's fees and any other bills related to this lawsuit hidden amongst so many bills paid by the city every week or month, I'd like to see an oral report given at every meeting with the total paid to the attorneys and any other costs in this matter. And ask that the reports begin on the next meeting, June twenty-seventh, and go through August twenty-second, or maybe even longer, depending on billing cycles. Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have Sandy Knup, nineteen oh one, Eighth Avenue. Are you thinking?
Hi, I'm Sandy. I reside at nineteen oh one, Eighth Avenue, and I also have a business at six oh one, First Avenue. I've lived in two other small towns in my seventy-plus years, one of about twenty-two-hundred people, and the other where I was born and raised, about three times the size of what Two Harbors is right now. I've always tried to pay attention to what's going on around me by participating in town functions, being on various boards and committees, and attending city council meetings because I was encouraged to do so in my family. Two of my grandfathers were mayors in my hometown. It was a goal of mine to live in this area ever since my first toe dip into the big light at the age of eight. When it came available to transfer to Two Harbors with my job and then retire here, I jumped at that chance. The excitement and peace of mind that came with moving here was unbelievable for me. But however, over the past few years, that's changed for me. I started to question living here because of what I was seeing and heard happening in town. But I'm also grateful, very grateful, to live here for members of this city and the council that we have that are willing to stand up and do what's right. Thank you to Two Harbors City Council members, all of you who listen to and take the advice of the man you hired to be our city attorney. Thank you for doing your job and following our city charter by putting the recall question on the ballot for this August ninth. This is a decision for the voters of Two Harbors to make. We understand what malfeasance is, and we understood when we read the certificate attached to the petition that what the mayor has done is malfeasance. He has conducted himself inappropriately in so many ways. And now apparently, he chose to not even submit a statement to the city explaining why his behavior does not constitute malfeasance. This is a provision of the recall process in the city charter, but he obviously doesn't think the city residents are owed an explanation for his outrageous and selfish behavior. All we got was a press release that was actually a campaign speech. I also would like to say that I second what Paul Iverson's request is, that we be apprised of the amount of money that is being spent on this frivolous lawsuit brought on by someone that should absolutely have no concern or business interfering with city business. Thank you all very much.
Um, we'll move on to administrative reports. Administrator Dunn, did you have anything to add today?
No, thank, thank you.
Okay. Uh, next follow-up to Joe, if you want to come up and keep us surprised with all the engineering things going on.
Certainly. Evening, council. Good to see you all. It's been a while since I've been here in person, so it's nice to be back. Um, got a few items on the agenda tonight. On behalf of both of them, we have items number ten and eleven on the consent agenda, which are payment requests on active projects. And we're also got communications numbers two, three, four, and five. So I'll try and keep this brief and just hit the highlights. Let's start with the update on the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two street improvement project. As you all know, or have probably seen, construction resumed. As of May twenty-third, they started digging again on Fifth Avenue, west of Eighth Street. Utilities in that street are done. Street base is about eighty, ninety percent done and will be finished this week. They'll be starting Sixth Avenue probably either late this week or early next week with utility work. And then tomorrow, they're scheduled to start digging for the repair of the sewer service at the Minnehaha School, which I'll update you with the next communication. We do have a pay request for the, the street project that's attached in your packet under Consent Agenda Item Number Eleven, I believe it is. And the amount of that pay request is eighty-two thousand, seven hundred, forty-seven dollars and fifty-seven cents. Everything in line with the original project budget and scope of work. So the recommendation would be for approval of pay request number fourteen and that amount. Then the next item, I'll continue on then. Uh, Minnehaha School Sewer Service, this is related to the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two street improvement project. This memorandum was at your place this evening, and I just wanted to make sure I know different, uh, members of the council on different committees and have different amounts of information. I've already been presented to them, so I just thought we'll just kind of do a quick recap of everything. Uh, so the background, so our sewer and water mains run east and west on the avenues. Minnehaha School occupies the entire block between Fifth and, excuse me, Fourth and Fifth Avenues, Sixth and, uh, excuse me, Seventh A Streets. So the sewer that serves Minnehaha School Service is located along Fifth Avenue and along Fourth Avenue. When we did investigation, designing the project, and looked through the existing records, there were twenty sewer stubs from the mains into the property where the school sits, because that original was platted with sixteen single-family lots. But there were twenty sewer services, and the challenge was to try and figure out which of those sewer services were actually live and which ones were not. The city didn't have records on which services were connected to the school. The school didn't have records on which sewer services were connected. So it had to be a, try to be ascertained through testing during construction, die testing of the, of the plumbing facilities in the school. We could have taken the approach to reconnect all twenty sewer services, but that would have been very expensive, and we knew most of them were not active, so it would have been a waste of money, frankly. And it would have introduced more locations for I and I to enter our sewer system. So we wanted to try and identify those services that were active and reconnect them. So during the die testing that was done in June and July of twenty twenty-one, when the sewer mains were replaced in Fourth Avenue, there were two services identified that were active, one to Fourth Avenue, one to Fifth Avenue, which we knew the school maintenance staff had said they believed there was more than one sewer service. They didn't know exactly how many. They didn't know which avenue the stubbed off of. So when we found two active ones, one on Fourth, one on Fifth, um, we had thought we had caught all of the active sewer services. The other unique circumstances with the school was the work had to be done while school was out of session, and the roads were required to be finished before school went back into session. So once we finished the sewer installation, it was going to be approximately two months before anybody used the actual sewer services, so we could check them to see if they were actually live or not. Whereas on a typical house, we know the next day if there's an issue with the sewer service. Well, about three days after school started, we got a call from them saying that they were getting a backup in the floor drain in the boiler room. So upon further investigation, it was determined there was a third sewer service coming off of Fourth Avenue that had not, was active, that was not reconnected. At that time, rather than just dig the street up, we could have done that, but the problem with that is we were late in the season, and school was back in session, so it would have severely disrupted bus traffic, the school activities. Would have been touch and go whether we could have gotten the street paved again and patched before winter set in. And the school lunch service, the lead time to come back and dig that service up, get the materials and do it, the school lunch service would have been out of service for some number of weeks, because the school lunch, the service that we found was not reconnected served the kitchen in the cafeteria. So the school, the school didn't have hot lunches until we got that service repaired. Uh, we did contact a plumber and asked about an internal solution where we could reconfigure the plumbing from the kitchen drain over to the sewer service and haven't reconnected the Fourth Avenue. Got a plumbing contractor out there. They were able to make a temporary connection and get the sewers, excuse me, get the school lunch program reestablished in just a few days. So that was good. So we had hot lunch again for the students. We knew it was a temporary solution, but we were hoping the state of Minnesota Plumbing Inspector would approve it as a permanent solution. So in November, we had a meeting of all the parties. It was a virtual meeting, and everybody from the city and the county and school, everybody was there. And unfortunately, the school, the state plumbing inspector would not approve that configuration as a permanent solution. He was requiring us to come back in twenty twenty-two and redig the original sewer, sewer service in Fourth Avenue and reconnect that, and then remove the temporary plumbing configuration that we had installed last fall. So that's where we are right now in the process, where we've got all the preparations made. They've cut, saw cut the street. We're going to remove the street tomorrow and dig to repair that sewer service. School let out last Thursday, so we waited until after the school was out of session. Should take about three days to get the repair done, and then the state plumbing inspector will come out and, and sign off that, that meets his satisfaction. So with that, I'll stop and ask if there are any questions about just the background of the overview of the, the sequence of events that got us to today. Okay. Then the, um, obviously, this work is beyond the scope of the original contract, because they have to come back and do this sewer service separately. And so we had a number of conversations between ourselves, city staff, the contractor, the county, the school district, and, um, we did pull together all of the hard costs associated with this issue. The hard costs, it's all detailed in the memorandum. In summary, the hard cost totaled about fifty-five thousand, one hundred dollars. And when we look at the, the proposed recovery of those costs, it's recommended or proposed that those costs be split evenly four ways amongst contractor, Ullin Brothers, the engineer, Bolton, the city of Two Harbors, and the school district. Uh, the county would not be involved in this because the county has no involvement with sanitary sewer, so they would not be part of this, uh, they're required for this solution. And again, this is hard cost only. Every organization has had some amount of staff time involved in this situation, and the agreement would just be, or the understanding would be that each organization would just cover its own internal staff time. And just so you know, because our staff works for the city, um, we have not charged the city for any of our staff time dealing with this issue since it popped up last September. We've been tracking it all internally, and when this issue is complete, I'll put it all on a document and submit it to the finance director, and I'll show the value of it, and I'll show the credit back, so that the net cost to the city is zero for our staff time that we've spent on this issue. And then in terms of the process, so the hard cost to each of the four parties involved, if you agree with the solution, is estimated at thirteen thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars. So that would be the city's share, would be thirteen thousand, two seventy-five, so with Bolton, the contractors, and the school district. The way that the process, um, that we propose is we would, um, make the plumber that's doing the internal repairs part, a subcontractor to Ullin Brothers. Ullin Brothers would submit the cost to the county for reimbursement under the construction contract, and the county would approve them less a deduct of twelve thousand, or thirteen thousand, two seventy-five. So that's how Ullin Brothers would pay their portion. The city would, the county then would invoice the city for the balance, which is the seventy-five percent. So that's how the city would pay their portion. We would credit our services back to the city for the, uh, we've got much more than thirteen thousand dollars worth of work left on this project. Uh, we would credit that amount back to you over the next two or three months on our invoices, so that's how we would reimburse our portion. And then the school's part would come by, uh, through their assessment, because we'll be assessing the project this fall, and so we would just simply add on a line and do the assessment for this portion of the solution. So that's how they would reimburse, reimburse their portion. So that's the summary of the costs and the proposed breakdown and the process for recovery.
And, uh, let me know if I'm wrong, Joe, but, uh, also as far as the school's portion, they would have had to have paid for that anyways, because it's another connection utility they weren't responsible for in the first place.
Yes. The, well, the assessment policy says that property owner pays one hundred percent of their individual sewer service cost. And so there is, we can calculate the equivalent cost of what the sewer would have been if it had been done last summer when the other two were done.
Correct.
And we'll assign that portion of the cost to the school. So the school's share of the solution will be slightly bigger than everyone else's. Everyone else, so we'll split the cost four ways, but the school will also have, um, the, the actual cost of their equivalent sewer service, just as part of their regular assessment. Um, this information, we did have a meeting of the four parties involved, and the county was in that meeting as well. And all four parties agreed at a staff level that the solution seemed the most equitable and the most reasonable. So all the staff from the four ABCs support this, this solution. We did review it at Utilities Committee on June first, and the Utilities Committee passed unanimous motion to recommend it to the city council for consideration. So with that, I'll stop and ask if you have any questions regarding the situation.
Go ahead, Counselor Iverson.
I just have a comment to say thank you for a thorough memo and explanation. This was really helpful, and especially the summary pages at the end and understanding that every party wasn't involved in having that conversation, and, um, I appreciate all the work, and I know that unexpected things, digging up fresh-laid streets is not something we have, we love doing, but unfortunately, it sounds like we didn't have a choice here. So I appreciate all the work, and I appreciate the work of the Utilities Committee and those folks that are on that committee. So, thank you.
I appreciate the collaboration for the solution, too. Now, I say it all the time, when you have projects, you know, you've got the owner, the engineer, the contractor, and it takes everybody working together to make a project go good. It just takes one person that wants to make a project go bad to, for it to go bad. So I appreciate the fact that all the parties were collaborating, collaborative in this solution. So, um, there's no formal action required tonight. I mean, I think a motion to recognize this and, and to approve supporting the recommended solution would be appropriate, but the actual cost will come in a formal change or to the construction contract that you'll probably see, um, at either the next meeting or the first meeting in July. Um, with that, the, the other items, I'll just touch on real quick. Uh, I don't think Brian or Jenny are here on behalf of the wastewater treatment plant project, so, um, they do have an update, a memo in your packet with some photographs, and there is a pay request associated with that in the amount of six hundred and ninety-one thousand, six hundred and ninety-five dollars and seventeen cents to Lakehead Constructors for the work done, uh, in the last month. And then again, is within the original scope and budget of the project. So with that, I can include my report in the interest of time, unless you've got any questions.
I have none. I think we're good.
Very good. Thank you.
Move on to committee reports. Airport Commission.
Um, Airport Commission, if they, I don't think we had a quorum or we didn't, um, meet, so we'll get one scheduled and we'll catch up there.
Public Works Committee.
Yes, we met on Thursday, June ninth. We talked about the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two street project. Uh, he gave us an update, uh, like he just did, on what's going on with the streets. There was a concern of a tree that needs to come down, whether or not, because that forester's going to come over and look at that. Some citizens were concerned. Uh, we also talked about the twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four street, um, project. We talked about the sewer at five oh two, Fifth Street. Uh, I believe Counselor Pass, Angel Ryan are going to do a walk around, because that is part county and part city that's conjoined under, so you just kind of, kind of figure out how they're gonna, it's a culvert, um, that has to be looked at a little bit more thoroughly. We talked about the Minnesota DOT Highway sixty-one project for twenty twenty-five. There was talks of doing an underpass or a tunnel, um, to kind of flow this in and wait. That's kind of a shocker, like two million dollars. But, I mean, we did the railroad one. I was like, how much is that? And it was eight hundred thousand. So, I mean, we'll continue talks for pedestrian traffic, ATV and snowmobile, maybe on that end, or possibly on the east and west end of town. Then Public Works gave us an update. There was some loose garbage left up at Odegaard. Uh, we don't currently require deposit or anything, but, um, some citizens just left garbage everywhere, so we asked that people please clean up after themselves in the park. We had no problem coming and picking up the garbage, but there was just stuff everywhere. Uh, there, the summer help is coming. They're still looking for more employees. They're just mainly mowing grass right now. We're kind of short on employees as opposed to usual. And I don't know if anybody has an update from the city on the flowers, but watering may be a problem with being short staffed. You have to be eighteen to be able to drive the truck and operate the equipment. I know we usually buy flowers every, usually they're up now, or around now, but, uh, so I don't know if anybody has an update, because I think we budgeted money for that, too.
I'm sure Mary's on top of that. That's something that she usually handles, so.
It was just a concern. We're going to have to figure something out, because watering takes, and they're in short staff right now. I'd love to see the flowers. Everyone loves them, and I do, too, but, uh, we'll have to figure out some way. We need more people to get it done. That's all I have.
Joe, did you have something to add about?
Yeah. Counselor Woodruff reminded me. Uh, that tree, yeah, the council, I got, I think, emails from a resident on Fifth Avenue concerning our tree, and we did get feedback from that, and that tree was taken down last Friday, so that issue kind of resolved. I just wanted to make sure you all are updated on it.
Thank you very much.
Either Counselor Woodruff or Joe, um, could you give us a brief summary of what you talked about with the twenty-three, twenty-four projects? I know you mentioned it, but is it, have we, do we have a plan yet? Is that coming to the council in the future? Just very high level.
Yeah. Feasibility report's been ordered, so we're working on a feasibility report now. So survey's been done. We're in the data collection, um, starting to work on preliminary layouts. And we, uh, we did meet with, um, Counselor Passy today in his role as the district engineer from Shoreland Water Conservation District, because we wanted to walk Sixth Avenue specifically and look at the relationship of Scum Creek to Sixth Avenue and make sure that we're on the same page with what the vision and the goals, uh, and the impacts from the project are going to be and just how we're going to approach it, so that we, you know, have the approach laid out and proper budget included in the feasibility report. So there'll probably be at least one more meeting out there on site, just to, you know, go through the iterative process of making sure we have it identified properly. And one other thing, if I may, um, Counselor Woodruff also mentioned the Highway sixty-one project. I know the community planner's here as well. There was a meeting with Mindot, a large meeting on May twenty-fifth, and one of the items that was discussed was the city's interest potentially in having underpasses put under Highway sixty-one, so that, um, ATVs and snowmobiles can safely cross through the underpass tunnels rather than having to cross that surface and risk collisions. And there was the concept that we wanted the west end of the city down kind of by Holiday Culvers area, and one on the east end of the city kind of by the campground. Mindot's position is they're willing to entertain including the project, but the city would be, would have to be the ones that would put together the plan and fund the cost of that. So they basically said, if you want to do it, city, that's great, but you have to, but they said step one, it would be to get them a preliminary layout and cost estimate, and they would need it in time by when they submit their documents for the overall project for environmental review, which is roughly this, November, December. So like in the next four months, we'd have to do preliminary layouts and cost estimates. So the communities development planner and I had a conversation last week, and we talked about this, and we could put together a scope and fee to do that work if the city is interested in that. So, um, you know, if you're comfortable with that, I could put together a scope and fee, share it with the planner, and we can see what effort it would take, and the council decide if you want to pursue that or not.
I guess we'll discuss that farther as a council, as a hall. I don't want to commit to anything, right? Especially, well, I mean, just with the projected cost of from what we heard. And I know that's not a fly on over, but I mean, that's four million dollars for two underpasses.
And the reference that Counselor Woodruff is making, in twenty eighteen, Mindot did do a, a study, um, for master trail plan purposes along the Highway sixty-one corridor, and they did show or propose or conceptual underpass, um, by Park Road to get from the campground to the golf course. The construction cost they had, you know, preliminary plan at that time was about one point five million, but that was construction only, so it didn't include any indirect costs, which usually, you know, run about twenty percent. And construction costs, that plan was in twenty eighteen, so construction costs from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-three are probably up, you know, twenty-five to thirty percent. So that one point five million from twenty eighteen, add twenty-five percent onto it for inflation, add another twenty percent on for the indirect costs, and yeah, and you're probably in the neighborhood of two million for each of the underpasses, so. But the kind of thing where if you had a plan, then you'd start pursuing potential funding, you know, grant funding, bonding funding, something like that. So it's the window of opportunity, you know, while Mindot's looking at doing the corridors. The first step would be us preparing a scope and fee to give to the planner as to what it would take to do the preliminary layout of the, of the culvert. So if, you know, we're ready to do that whenever you guys, if and when you guys want us to do that.
Garrett?
Yeah, the request for the tunnels at the east and the west end of town were originated from the Trees and Trails Committee.
Garrett, do you possibly know, as far as being on the Trees and Trails Committee, what kind of funding would be available for a trail system?
The DNR does have funding for trails, and these are actually motorized trail uses that were, that express interest. ATV and snowmobile trail used in both of these sects. Both of these areas have existing trails that end at Highway sixty-one. And currently, coming into Two Harbors, there is an equity crossing, which is extremely dangerous and does not allow for grooming equipment to get to the south side of Highway sixty-one. And then on the other side of town, there's a campground, which is right there, as well as the city-owned property. As well, the golf course is right there also. That's why we looked at those two areas. The middle corridor, which at one point had been looked at, was discarded as it really didn't fit in with anything for trails in the area.
Any more on the Public Works Committee?
Nope, that's all.
All right. Your good job? Thank you. All right. The ad hoc liquor store committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We did meet June first, and we, we're looking to see about, you know, the overall costs and how we're going to do this if we decide that we do want to relocate the liquor store to the west end of town while there is that property there. And even if we do, you know, purchase the two buildings, the, you know, any other buildings near the current liquor store, would that still even help and benefit with any more space for parking, which is the biggest problem? And then we talked with Mr. Elquist about how much space he thinks he would need in a new building. And eight thousand square feet is where he was kind of all parking it. And, you know, that is a municipal, so that would also be, you know, more, you know, merchandise on the shelves that can come and go. And then we're going to bring in an architect and maybe, you know, see about how, what we could construct. Mr. Dyke gave us some great information about a liquor store that they put in in Mora and approximate cost for that. And so we've got that as a nice comparison. And Dave is going to look into costs, what he's going to really need, what kind of equipment, how much all that's going to do. So we're going to start just putting some framework under what it would cost us to have a new building. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Kathy.
Can you remind me what documentation we have from the first go around of this design? This has already been talked about at the council several years ago about using the west end, and there's a lot of information that's already been done. So I just want to make sure that that's brought forward before we just start reinvesting money in designs and plans when we already did that once.
Correct. Yes, I can, Mr. Chair. I think we can go back and we can find that documentation, and we have it. Thank you.
Great.
All right. The Utilities Committee met, and we met on June first as well. One of our old business, we have the wastewater treatment facility exterior color selection. Bolton Mink is getting a panel ready for us. It's called a mock-up panel, and we're going to assemble that for the council to view and decide. It's going to be rather large, so it will be onsite down at the wastewater treatment plant. So I would encourage after we get word from Bolton Mink that when that's all set up, each counselor will go down there and, and kind of check it out. They also use that as an exact scale model for while they're building the wall and, and different things down there to make sure that everything is matching. And then we also had a discussion with Blake Prince on trees that need to be removed on the upper side of Eighth Avenue, six hundred block of Skunk Creek.
Mr. Chair?
That's two different things.
That was two different things.
Yeah.
Can I jump in here for a minute?
Go ahead, yep.
Thank you. Actually, Blake was looking at some trees that are in, that were planted in the railway in Ziegog around Eighth Avenue. Apparently, the trees get trimmed almost every year because they're right where the main line comes through. It was the recommendation of the committee to send letters to notify the residents that are next door or whatever in the neighborhood that were taking them down permanently. They probably shouldn't have been planted right there in the beginning, because, you know, little pine trees become really big pine trees. So we are going to take those down. We also talked about working again with the soil and water folks. As the project proceeds with the Fifth Street rebuild, there's some issues on the
Six hundred block.
Six hundred block of Skunk Creek, where we also have a power line main that comes through. And as we're looking at that whole kind of Skunk Creek corridor as that culvert gets replaced, thought it might be good to partner with the soil and water group to see if we can't get some funding to maybe do some abatement in there, making, you know, trying to avoid some of the issues that have gone on, gone on for years with the erosion and, and making sure that, you know, plantings, if we have to take trees down, what can we put in? It's not going to affect the power line. And I think that was, oh, can I add one more, one more thing? I did want to just thank the employees at the sewage treatment plant. Apparently, during one of the torrential rainstorms right around Memorial Day, we had a little problem down at the sewage plant, and those guys worked almost forty-eight hours straight, making sure that when you flushed, it didn't go into Lake Superior. They did a great job, and as Luke told us, he said, when the lights go out, everyone notices. But when something happens down there, people don't always know that. There was, there was quite an event that happened, and they were able to take turns going in and making sure that things were turned on. And there was no, no problems as far as the discharge goes. So I just want to say thank you to the teams and the groups that we have working that keep the City of Two Harbors running so well. And Ben, you still owe them donuts.
I agree.
Mr. Chair?
I wanted to know if it had been passed on to you yet, or Blake has mentioned yet. I had an email from a constituent that is very interested in putting a charging station up at the Hul Information Center. As people are coming in or out of town, it's a big parking lot. And I don't know if that's gotten to Public Utilities or Public Works yet.
It was on, I'm sorry.
There's a different charging station?
Installing a new one, putting in a new one. I know one's going up on the hill up there, and we got the one right here, but then a third one.
Okay, I haven't.
It wasn't, it wasn't brought to that, oh, two weeks ago, maybe, but I don't know that we ever finished talking about it. Maybe back in May, I don't know. Right after we talked about it.
It must have been, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's in there somewhere. I'll get it back in the agenda.
Go ahead.
I just had a follow-up question on Skunk Creek, six hundred block. Is that the part where it's in between, it's like running through that alley? So that it's, it's behind one set of houses and in between? Is that the block you're talking about?
No, but it's not on the north side.
So you're
Six hundred, no, that's separate, sorry.
Four five. Six hundred block would be just downstream.
Six hundred block, it's whole place that's out there.
Yeah. Got houses on both sides.
Okay, so it's not the next, the five hundred block, which it runs in front of one set of houses we're talking about?
Yeah, and that will be, that will also be looked at during this Fifth Streets. All of that, hopefully. If we can work with our partners at Lake County Soil and Water, I think this is an opportune time to figure some of that out.
Got it. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I could, so I was at the utility meeting, and when Blake discussed the whole tree thing, and because I took staff the Trees and Trails Commission, I have to know the tree ordinance. So there is city code involved in that process that needs to take place. And I did send a copy of that to, I don't know, I think Miranda, Joel, Ben, maybe you were on there, and Blake, too, and Jim Gilbert, because he has to be involved in that, too.
Oh, for taking the trees down?
Yeah.
Yep.
So I mean, we had to replace it somewhere.
All right.
Mr. Chair, I had one more that I could add. When personnel is, is going to meet, I was wondering when that next meeting is? Because I've got a couple of things that I was going to bring up, or I can bring up with you afterwards, too. But I was just wondering, when is personnel scheduled to meet next? And while you're looking, I had a
I would probably say, yeah, the chair would know better.
I had, I've heard that we're really, really short-staffed from some employees in Public Works to where this is when they're mowing, and this is when they're busy, plus there's other just, you know, emergencies that come up. And I was just wondering if we have started the process about hiring, you know, there are three people down already, which you know that, but have we started a process to get those replaced?
Yes, we've started a process. We were reviewing those job descriptions. And then, you know, we also have other members out that are, you know, in, in different technical stages in, within the public works, and so we have had a discussion on that. Go ahead.
June twenty-third is the next meeting of the Personnel Committee, three thirty, here.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions? Are there any other committee reports? All right. Next, I have a resolution approving the consent agenda items.
Second.
Can you please read those items, Kathy?
Sure, we withdrew number one, so we'll start with number two on planning the City of Two Harbors. We paid on June fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. Three, approving payroll for the second half of May, twenty twenty-two. Four, accepting the notice of retirement of Stuart Anderson and authorizing a letter of appreciation for his service. Five, accepting the notice of resignation from Aaron Johnson, who has part-time position with the police department effective June sixteenth, with regret, and authorizing a letter of appreciation for his service. Six, accepting the resignation of Aaron Marshall from the position of volunteer firefighter effective May eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, with regret, and authorizing a letter of appreciation for his service. Seven, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and deliver the acceptance of change order to the agreement with Jim Perroll Construction for the Library Roof Repair Project for an increase in the amount of three thousand six hundred seventy-four dollars for removal and replacement of rotted ISO board. Eight, accepting the proposal of Lighthouse Power Systems to provide maintenance on emergency generators at the water and wastewater treatment facilities for an amount of three thousand four hundred forty-five dollars. Nine, accepting option two in the amount of seventy-eight thousand dollars and the paving option in the amount of sixteen thousand six hundred twenty-five dollars of the proposal of Kaminsky paving for a project to provide improvements to the asphalt services at the campground. Ten, authorizing payment, payment in the amount of six hundred ninety-one thousand six hundred ninety-five dollars and seventeen cents to Lakehead Constructors for pay application number seven for the wastewater treatment plant project. Eleven, authorizing payment in the amount of eighty-two thousand seven hundred forty-seven dollars and fifty-seven cents to Lake County for the city's portion of the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two street improvement project for work through June first. Twelve, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and deliver a license agreement between the City of Two Harbors, Twin Ports Entertainment, and the Two Harbors Golf Association for a concert event to be held at the golf course. Thirteen, authorizing the closure of First Avenue and the six hundred block for the twenty twenty-two Moonlight Market events. Fourteen, requesting the city attorney draft language to authorize staff to approve street closures for routine events. Fifteen, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute and deliver a license agreement between the City of Two Harbors and Chad Crivens regarding the property located at seven thirty, Second Avenue for the purpose of eliminating certain hazards following a recent house fire at the property. Sixteen, hiring the following temporary employees. Grayson Peterson, Casey Underdale, Peyton Cos, Emily Olson, Dexter Jackson, Alec Chernus, Zachary Ventler, Olivia Dugas, and Elijah Carlson Higgins. Seventeen, approving the request of the chief police to allow Jody Larson to attend the BCA Criminal Justice Information Users Conference. Eighteen, approving the request of the water wastewater treatment plant superintendent to allow Gary Ganzer to attend the MRWA Water and Wastewater Training in Waukesha, Minnesota. Nineteen, approving the request of the Heritage Days Committee to authorize a family foray during the twenty twenty-two Heritage Days celebration.
Is there any discussion of these items? Call, please.
Woodruff?
Yes.
Glasper?
Yes.
Brennwell?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Passy?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Redden?
Yes. Now, I was briefly reminded by Administrator Dyke that the attorney report, I also oversaw that. And so if you'd like to give a report now, Mr. Attorney?
I don't know. I'm sure I was here. All I will tell you is there was a curate. On Monday, we are meeting for a decision for this report, Judge.
All right. Moving on to Communications. Patty, could you actually read those in, too, please?
Certainly. Number one, public access coordinator activity report, report for the month of May, twenty twenty-two. Two, a memorandum from Joe Rain and Brian Golden, Bolton and Mink, providing engineering project updates. Three, a memorandum from Joe Rain, Bolton and Mink, providing a status update on the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two street project. Four, a memorandum from Brian Golden, Bolton and Mink, providing a progress report on the wastewater treatment facility improvement project. And five, a memorandum of Joe Rain, Bolton and Mink, regarding the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two street improvement project as it relates to the many AHA school sewer services.
Thank you very much. I see no unfinished business, so I'll move to new business item number one. I have three options for that. I'll just read them all out, and we'll have discussion in order. I'll look for a motion. Option number one, electing to not fund the city's costs for the twenty twenty-two festival sales event. Two, electing to fund the city's costs in full for the twenty twenty-two festival sales event. Or option three, electing to fund the city's costs in part for the twenty twenty-two festival sales event. I'm looking for a motion first.
No, I'm making a motion on the table based on your recommendation.
Second.
Thank you. Can I get a little call on that, Patty?
Sure. Woodruff?
Yes.
Glasper?
Yes.
Brennwell?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Passy?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Redden?
Yes.
Move on to new business item number two. And as you said, a meeting date and time for the KNTV Commission. Looking for a motion on that.
So move.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, I'm looking for a motion presented beside of number three. The same thing for the waterfront committee of the whole, the set of date and time for a meeting.
So move.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, and next, I will look for announcements.
Mr. Chair, just a couple of items tonight. Thank you very much. Number one, I had a really nice compliment about Public Works' ongoing crew. As everybody knows, it's been really, really wet out there, and they got in and hit some spots that really needed it. And in years past, they've always been, they've struggled in those stages of the summer because of getting summer help. But this year, that wasn't the case. This year, we went to one and made it to some machine. So, so really appreciate, in particular, Craig Jusilis, name was mentioned, is to be a go-getter, and, and folks were appreciative of that. So I just wanted to pass that along. And then I had kind of a, another email that I think was a little, little tougher. I don't know of Two Harbors values and looseness, but if you value your visitors, I suggest you, you bring this incident to attention at your council and to those who task it is to attract visitors to your area. This couple's been together for eight years, and the boyfriend has been subject to racist remarks all his life. Imagine taking a brief vacation, celebrating a successful graduation, taking time to relax before back to work at school, thinking a nice getaway, then to be insulted publicly by a racist resident in the worst way imaginable. Doesn't say too much of a welcome, does it? Please, Mayor Swanson, take this under advisement. Thank you. And I just wanted to read that because they asked me to. I think we all know that this community doesn't welcome racism of any kind. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Councilor.
I just have one additional announcement for council. Just a reminder that the League of Minnesota Cities Conference is the twenty-second through the twenty-fourth in Duluth, Minnesota. For those that have attended in the past, it's a great opportunity to learn and have access to information. So even if you can only make it part of the time, my understanding in talking with Miranda that you could reach out to Joni Brandt, and she would schedule registration. I know it's close, it's next week, but I just would encourage counselors to take that opportunity. It's not very often that this event is in Duluth, Minnesota, so it's right in, in our neighborhood, and I think it's of high value.
Thank you. If there's nothing else, I will look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Can I get a roll call on that, Patty?
Woodruff?
Yes.
Glasper?
Yes.
Brennwell?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Passy?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Redden?
Yes.
We are.